...
Councilwoman, Mrs. Dusty. Councilman Western.
Here.
Councilman Rowland.
Here.
Councilman Torres.
Here.
Councilman DeFauls.
Here.
Councilman Keenan.
Here.
Councilman Spaniel. Councilman Massey.
Here.
President Gold.
Here. Good evening, President. At this time, as whatever they stand, believe or whether they believe in replay by Congressman Gonzalez.
Oh my God, as we legislate for our community, may strong sense of justice and fair play pervade all we do. Above all, may we seek out our holy will. Give us the strength to follow it regardless of all your considerations.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have public speaking. Before we get into the public speaking, just a reminder to everyone that come up to the microphone to address the council, any matter, we hear the circuit, but we also respect. So I'm asking each person that come up this evening and address the council there again, in any manner, we will entertain that. I will give you a response. If it's something that took a bit, I will respond at the end of the public speaking. Those that want to address a council person, I'm asking you to be respectful to them or her, and also please refrain from derogatory and derogatory matter. And also, please be reminded not to yell out their name in a unprofessional way. If you do so, I'm going to call them out of order, and ask you please, please handle the circuit. What I just reminded you of, and I will ask you to be dismissed, and if you fail to be dismissed, I will have the first time, the second time, I will ask the police officer to escort you. Like I said, we're here in the circuit, we're working there, we're giving, each one of us, we're trying, and we give you, everyone, of this most humble respect that we can give you, and we ask of that and return it, that's all we asking. You want to complain about anything, make a statement, you can do so, if you would, then you can respect the matter, and you can speak to each of us and respect the matter. If you do that, we can get some work done, we can all be disagreeable, we got to be disagreeable, and that place comes. So at this time, I'm going to ask the public speaking, anyone who would like to come up and address the city council, any matter, please do so at this time, state your name and address for the record, and step up at this time. But just remind you what the thing I just went over to, thank you. So at this time, public speaking. Once again, anyone who would like to address the council, any matter, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Just remember the word I just came up with. State your name and record, name and address for the record.
Delana Mahoney, Thelis Elwin Place.
Thelis Elwin.
Elwin Place.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. It's just so much more than I can handle.
Take your time, take your time.
There's so much on.
Do one at a time.
One at a time. What I want to talk about is about the police department. The police department for every other community is as good as when it comes to serving the people.
So you hear what I'm saying?
Actually, I'm so here we are.
Oh yeah?
Yes, I'm here we are. And I'm talking about the police department, I'm talking about that, they are all the charge. This is ridiculous, I have to, the way they made, mentioned. And also. Yes.
Take your time, okay, one at a time. Okay. Anyone else like to address the council in any manner, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, City Council, calls from the 116th Fulton Street, City of Elizabeth.
Good evening.
I wasn't going to make a comment, I just had to come by some of my side, because I couldn't interest what you all doing here tonight. But I can now notice a strong police presence. Are you guys expecting a riot here tonight? To have three police officers here? I find that intimidating for the public, to have a strong police presence. I get the tone here was maybe complaining about something, some of the things that been going on throughout the city with all small police officers. I'm for one, I do support the police, and they do a great job, they have probably one of the best police forces in the state of New Jersey. But I don't appreciate anyone using them to intimidate the public, and I feel that's just happening today. I mean, I look through these chambers, and I count maybe half a dozen or so people, you have thirty officers, at the water event, they have fifty cops, they have ninety people. I mean, you know, I think it's intimidating. You really want to serve the public, Mr. President, and you really are concerned about what they have to say, you shouldn't intimidate them by bringing so many cops here. I understand there's a lot of action, you know, throughout the city, there was a shooting, there was an officer who was involved in altercation, it's like, ah, 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 but I think it still serves the public. And the police department comparison, they had three, three cops, I passed their request, the city here watched, eight people. You know, that's your pride, I'm sorry, I don't agree with you, I think it's wrong. I think quite frankly, as a light official, we have to respect the people, and part of that respect is allowing them to speak freely. And you know, the issue with this country has been fair, especially to minorities, you should know this. We've come a long way to work with the police department, but we use them this way, and it's not fair, police aren't, people are afraid. This is what happens to them, is they're afraid after being assaulted or vandalized or poor crimes. We have to be very responsible, how we use the police, they deserve to be created, and I can see it, I can feel it in this room, and you know, and I hate when I do that. I'm looking at that desk right there.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the city council in any manner, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Sammy Mahoney, Thelis Elwin Place.
Any council, please.
Council, go ahead, all of us, thank you, just challenge our right of freedom of speech. I think you need to read the Constitution, go over it, you sit in a very powerful seat here. You understand, you could be accused of being a communist, socialist, or something, you going to tell us what to say and who to say to? Now that's not, that's not in the Constitution, we have a right to just say that which we want to say. And you may not have the authority to say what you want to say, but it's about clear language of something, like the language has been so offensive, those language, that we've been coming to with this guy right. Now I'm here to talk about Sharice Taker being shot repeatedly on March 1st, who went into his tenth operation for that. Been shot in those last, bullet loss all in the building of 220 Park Road. We fear for his life. We would like to know why the police department is guarding him at University Hospital. His mother has asked me to come up here. She fears for her son's life. If he goes to the county jail, will there be another Alamo situation where you listen to Zion, y'all are Alamo people, too, and preach about? But we, we, we are, we are fully prepared of what the police department is trying to do. At Open Plaza, I've been there, I witnessed it, I've been advocating against this racist police force for many years now. I assume call our people limits on the, on the Alamo, it's riding through my neighborhood, you can act like I don't have it, now, you didn't see, but you may be always used. It's sad, but it's almost a breath of my body. If I have to come up to this microphone in the wheelchair, I will, or go anywhere else to speak against any injustice that's happened. You know, you want to condemn them for little piña trucks, I guess it's not, right? Who going to get the drugs from? All these tons of cocaine sitting, poured in the airport, no, they not going after the big guys, huh? But you going after these kids, and then you go after with the intent to kill. You went to same thing with those young, four years ago. Shot one guy, shot another one, he must have, no reason, no motive, he wanted to assist the rest. But look, the police department is good. Oh, he tried to alarm, he tried to alarm the police. Okay, man, if he tried to alarm, well, he did alarm, oh, he's, why didn't the police have shot? You know, he didn't do nothing, we tied the lives. This young man right here, right here, his name is Elijah Trump, he was with that brother that night, he went, because we feel for his life. The police are harassing every chance they get. He, he, he is scared, he's like, our point is coming, I didn't think he'd go down, because of the pressure that he's under. You can sit down. But, you know, we just want to make life, police start, the council doesn't even win. You know? We pray, we couldn't pray that none of these young men die at the hands of the police department, we pray that it doesn't happen. We stressed out, the black community is stressed out, especially at the bottom. Whatever you can do to help them, yes, yeah, whatever power you have, to get these police sensitized, to get some sense in their head, that we do not tolerate. But they calling our women to be one of them, they young girl, who we had up here two weeks ago. Young lady got ready to go in the elevator with the police, police want to know it, and she wouldn't get on, and then she, she got scared, and she back, they said, don't worry about it, we're not going to shoot you. Right here, after we even two weeks ago. Why do all young people have to go through this nonsense? Huh? Why? What is it going to stop? And I thank my man for saying, we could kill them if we get fifty back here, I would give a tooth set about it, you understand? They only do me nothing, that's because we fair up, we fair up. Thank you. Thank you, Samantha. Anyone else like to address the city council, if you have other things, step forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm President Joseph Fox, would you caution me?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'll write it for you, but I'm one man in the next city. This is very angry, correct? I was standing on, I was scared, I was afraid, oh, I have a God, but what I was saying, what I want to say to this, could I show Mr. Taker family something that this family, not this hospital, the gold, so the children can't tell, the children can't tell, no matter what, the police department. Because I have the police, something every child, just like the police department, the great, because I understand the two sides of the road, that's what, that's what it's worth, well, we don't need to go through this, that's what it comes down to, to be achieved. Or also, I would treat him fair, I would treat him like a man, because nobody doesn't treat him unjust, I would care who they are, about possession that they have, they want to be fair. So we just want for y'all to show this family that y'all care, that they will look at them, see what was taken, what they think that y'all could do to, why he went to this county jail, for the real harm that we come to him, and to figure out what happened at home, because two sides to that story. We can't almost go on a close society for that cop. That's a lot of couple cops out here that do things, they still get way more than, and they ring one down, I try to talk about, you find out that, you been this way all your life. Every city council meeting that we've been coming to, these police been texting other police, last, last, uh, one ago, they got back to Open Plaza, police sent the, sent the gas station, following us back to, to the toilet, in a red truck, laughing, you know, speaking. Like you said, we shouldn't be intimidated, come here and tell y'all this is what I'm about, because we paying taxes, I pay a lot of taxes, and this where I'm from, I love this town, and it's, it's not right at all. Because at one point, it's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be a problem, because I want to, I want to, I'm not going to be that guy, I'm telling everybody, the police, for the same stuff. We don't want to see that again, nobody want to, everybody want to live their life and do what they got to do for their family, but we not going to live in fear, fear about the clothes on hand.
Okay, thank you. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Ms. Cantley, for our way of raising you, who goes out, I would, uh, go to San Francisco, um, this young man, yes, having all these surgeries, when he gets out of the hospital, I'm sure he's going to be six months or better of being happy. What I'm afraid of, and something I'm hearing is, you have a young man that's going to get out of the hospital, to go into this county jail, can anyone assure the safety? But God forbid he dies from a strange, happening, will it be investigated? You know, um, I work over there at this county, uh, Open Plaza, it's like a soil over there, there's no way in the world I could live there and go through what these people are going through. Have the terror police, park outside the building, walk the hallways, and you're supposed to live in peace. My home is my castle. When I go to my house, I don't expect to hear police outside my door, I don't expect to be harassed, or go through anything, you know? What's happened to this young man, whether it was his fault or not, who shouldn't be going through this? Then I see he's under this big bed, for what happened to this house, or this man suffered enough? You know, um, I don't know what this investigation is, is turning out to be, um, we asked for it, and we told our friends we're going to get to it, but we haven't gotten the answers on it, what is going on? And, um, I'd like to know, and these people need to be assured that they're not going to be harassed, and we are tired, and you don't want us to come out, because you know what it's going to be. But how much do you think we can take? You know, we done lived through all of this, and I'm, might say, I'm older, but I'm one of the youngest, so I never lived through, um, this harassment, and I'm going to fight for what is right. And if this don't stop, you guys are going to cause us to rise up, and I'm sure you don't want, thank you.
Thank you. Any resident, actually, like address the council in any manner, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Victoria Taker, I'm Sharice Taker's mom, we just moved to the hospital through a surgery.
Hey, hey, kind of like, why don't you just, they can't, state your name and name?
My name is Victoria Taker, I'm Sharice Taker's mom, I'm the guy, I'm the kid's mother who was shot, I'm the man's mother who was shot in Open Plaza on March 1st. My son has had ten operations today, the tenth one, he's been in the operating room since seven thirty this morning till seven thirty tonight. He is not going well, and I'm just asking for you guys to please, please look into this. I was speaking to my son, and I know that my son will not do the things that his security is doing, and I said, hey, he's a angel, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, he was born there, he's at Open Plaza, and he has friends there, and he was visiting, and I'm sad to say that this, the way this is going to happen is exactly what I said to my son. Please just don't even visit me, because you could be coming out of the building, and cops could come in, and something bad could happen, and that's exactly what happened. My son is every day crying, I never seen my son cry like that, afraid of it, because everything is coming back to me, what was going on, he found out where his choices are, and I'm trying to have some fight for his life, but he's so very busy working about his funeral, and I'm just going to tell him, let me worry about that. Because I'm here to allow, when my son got to that hospital, he was dead, they saved him, my son is fighting for his life, I'm just going to fight for you people to help him. It's not fair, it's not fair, it's not fair, it's not fair for me, it's not fair for the rest of these mothers that's out here, and I'm not going to do the wrong things, I don't, I worked for the term, so I know what's right, and I know what's wrong, and I can tell my needs right from wrong, they know right from wrong. And I'm just asking for everybody to please look into this and be fair, just be fair, just, just don't think that it's just some kid that's in trouble for, just think about, maybe this is your kid, or your sister's kid, or your brother's kid, think about it that way. My son had a lot of possibilities, okay, sometimes things go wrong, I understand it, but my kid didn't do anything this time, and I'm asking you to, from the bottom of my heart, just like I'm going to pray to God, and you dead, to save my son, and keep him, keep him fighting for his life, because it's not over yet. He may not know that, if he goes into that county, if they come tomorrow and say, okay, who are you, who want to take him, if he goes to that county, he'll never lose his legs again, he'll never really lose his legs again. He tried, because I've been trying to give him a job, I have proof, I have shown him, I have proved that he's not going to try to do the right things, I just, I think it's on my side, and I'm just begging for mercy in my heart, to beg, I'm begging for people, please be fair this time, please, please, please.
Any other resident, actually, like address the council in any manner? Once again, any resident, actually, like address the council in any manner? Shane Allen? I believe that, just pushing the beat. Before we go on to, uh, public here, to this, this couple statement that was made, of course, my mother just made, this Victoria let you know that we certainly hear your cry, and we bear your pain, and we're going to do everything in our power, but as you know, I said in the last meeting, I'll say it again, it's under thorough investigation, internal affairs, and a prosecution. So we have to wait, we have to wait until we come back. Now, how you know it will come out, I do not know, because I was there, I don't think one of us was there, but certainly we feel the pain. No one, no one at city council here tonight, or tomorrow, loves, likes to see a child get hurt or shot, but at least for anybody, because that is not something that we can help. So, once again, I let you know that we do feel the pain, and if you recall, someone came by my house, few weeks ago, they brought from Prong Road, they asked me about making sure that you may be able to see your son. They had stopped it, and I spoke to the police director, and he awarded that request to you again, who may ask him to get it done. So I'm hoping that still taking place, if it not let me know, it's still taking place, okay, and like I said, of course, he assured me, after I spoke with him, that he would allow me to see his son. So that's the least I can do at that time, I can't get what I'm in front of, affairs, and that, prosecution, okay? A couple of statements were made by the police department, I let you know, this, this party does not condone any police brutality, and we do not condone any police profile, that we, if we know about them, saying, we can deal with them, but until we know about them, you know, for fashion, then we can't, I think, about it, if we know about them, then we can do something about them. Now, someone made a statement, and also, that I said, which I did not, ask you, tell you what to say. I did not say what you could say, because the question, you had a question, right, you say, because once, I, all I asked was you to address us as we address you, that's all asking, and that's all we're asking, and you can say thanks to all of us, by not calling my name out, in the right total manner, but that's all, that's for respect. We give, I think, you know, we give everyone in the whole city, in the whole world, I'm going to say the whole world, that we need, we give the respect, that's all we ask, you guys, to give us respect, okay, certainly, you give us respect, and that's all. And someone may have mentioned about the police officers, but we do not know how the police officers will be here, and each meeting, sometime, sometime, they are meeting, you know, have energy, something, but they're supposed to have at least two to three police officers at any given time, so, and I, I served, I'm the president, and the police director did not call the city council, and said, now, two police officers tonight, or three police officers today. But whatever they said now, it should be at least two, no more than three, and I don't think they're here intimidating anyone, they're here as the guideline, as protection for everyone, including those who have no license, and then they're here intimidating anyone, and that's not true. So for someone to say that, I think, is sad, for a citizen, come before us, and say that they're here intimidating someone, then I, they're here every week, where they have.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm all, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Listen, Mr. Mahoney, you had your order, you had your, your order, and we had public speaking, made a, made a statement, sir, and right now, I have in mind, thank you, thank you. Okay, so, uh, we, we are here to protect the circuit, that's what we're doing. At this time, I'm going to move on to public here.
Ordinance number forty-three sixty-two, authorize a refunding bond ordinance in an amount not to exceed one million six hundred thousand dollars to refund two thousand for early retirement bonds for cost savings to taxpayers of the city by refinancing existing debt service obligations for said bonds.
If anyone heard order number forty-three sixty-two, what is your, anyone, anyone, anyone from, something like, address order number forty-three sixty-two? Stand on.
Ordinance number forty-three sixty-three, authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Manon Foster, seven thirty-three Jersey Avenue.
You heard the real order number forty-three sixty-three, anyone here who talks like the rest, order number forty-three sixty-three? Stand on.
Ordinance number forty-three sixty-four, authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Juan and Nabi, Don Mutres, eighty-three Westfield.
You heard the order, we know order number forty-three sixty-four, anyone from the public like the rest, order number forty-three sixty-four? Stand on.
Ordinance number forty-three sixty-five, authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Leon Foster, seven thirty-three Jersey Avenue.
You heard the real order number forty-three sixty-five, anyone from the public like the rest, order number forty-three sixty-five? Once again, anyone who would talk like the rest, order number forty-three sixty-five, stand on, and you're listening, and you said, my colleague, I would specify, we need a physician, a physician, and board of city officers, and move on to order number first reading.
Ordinance number forty-three sixty-six, authorize the establishment of one year of moratorium for the issuance of sanctions and enforcement of certain provisions of chapter ten, point twenty-eight, point forty, of chapter ten, point twenty-eight.
to chapter ten, point twenty-eight, fifty of the code of the city of Elizabeth relating to no parking at eight AM to four PM during school hours on Ripley Place, Third Street.
You have any order number forty-three sixty-four, your pleasure?
Will the ordinance run well, this is President.
Move next second, you come next.
Yes, Mr. President.
Yeah, Councilman Questa.
President, I'm happy to see that we are, uh, considering these orders for our reading. Uh, as I had stated, uh, last week, we cast a meeting, uh, for residents and, uh, actually Ederson, staff member of school thirteen, uh, found out the lead, the item is issued, and he turned it to, uh, to Councilor Torres. I was very happy when, like, the councilman recommended this mark for it. Because, uh, as we discussed last week, uh, the vibe of the matter is that this rule has not been enforced for years. While they, while they have our shooting, uh, people receiving, receiving tickets, uh, from our, uh, directly, I think we do it the right way, I mean, providing, uh, a relief for people in the area that are in need. And as you have indicated, Mr. President, I hope that we, uh, make a close look, uh, not only in this, for the sake of the city, but the entire city, uh, regarding parking so that, so that we do the, uh, the fair thing. Thank you.
The council, anyone else? Yeah, Councilman.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd also want to commend Councilman Questa and Councilman Torres for bringing this, uh, issue to light. You know, parking is an ongoing situation here in the city of Elizabeth, whether being in Elizabeth Ford or North Broad Street or even in sections in York Ward. And, um, to have a moratorium so that we can really look at the issue, um, and see what can be done. So, kudos to Councilman Questa and Councilman Torres for working together on this issue, and I will be supporting you.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes, Mr. President. I think it's a good idea that they're studying pertaining to this particular location where the Councilman Questa mentioned. We do have a location in the city, not because they're getting hit with tickets, but we should be establishing an additional space so that the residents and teachers and employees can find a suitable part of the location. If we stay with some of the law that has been written many years ago by the state, the entire city of Elizabeth is in violation. So, I think it's, it's a good suggestion from the part of the first world Councilmen Torres and Councilman Questa, I will move with them, but bear in mind that we have to look the entire city for the future, please.
Uh, anyone else? I, I certainly echo just what you guys said, and I, I, Councilman Questa, when you said by doing citywide, that's what I, I think we should do more eventually to get that done. Go on.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gusti.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Grover.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Maza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye, the eyes, point person, please.
Ordinance number forty-three sixty-seven. Authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Olga, I, Priscina, eight forty-eight Martin Street.
You have the order number forty-three sixty-seven, your pleasure?
Will the ordinance run well, Mr. President?
Move next second, you come next. Go on.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gusti.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Grover.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Maza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye, the eyes, point person, please.
Public hearing, further distribution of the four board orders shall take place at the city council meeting held Tuesday evening night, twenty thirteen, at seven thirty PM. Orders on line passes.
Ordinance number forty-three sixty-two. Authorize a refunding bond or an incident amount not to exceed one million six hundred thousand dollars to refund two thousand for early retirement bonds for cost savings to taxpayers of the city by refinancing existing debt service obligations for said bonds.
You have the order number forty-three sixty-two, your pleasure?
Will the ordinance run well, Mr. President?
Move next second, you come next. Go on.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gusti.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Grover.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Maza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye, the eyes, point person, please.
Ordinance number forty-three sixty-three. Authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Anna Horst of Ten and a Half Oil Place.
You have the order number forty-three sixty-seven, your pleasure?
Will the ordinance run well, Mr. President?
Move next second, you come next. Go on.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gusti.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Grover.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Maza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye, the eyes, point person, please.
Ordinance number forty-three sixty-four. Authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Juan and Nobby Don Munoz, eighty-three Westfield Avenue.
You have the order number forty-three sixty-four, your pleasure?
Will the ordinance run well, Mr. President?
Move next second, you come next. Go on.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gusti.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Grover.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Maza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye, the eyes, point person, please.
Ordinance number forty-three sixty-five. Authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Leon Horst of Seven Thirty-Three Jersey Avenue.
You have the order number forty-three sixty-five, your pleasure?
Will the ordinance run well, Mr. President?
Move next second, you come next. Go on.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gusti.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Grover.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Maza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye, the eyes, point person, please.
Move this.
In compliance with State Fiscal Year Two Thousand Thirteen Appropriations Act, city council is requested to approve all payments related to accumulated uncompensated absence benefits. Confirm the reappointment of Ms. Winona J. A. Drum Elizabeth to serve as a member of the Elizabeth Housing Authority for a term of five years commencing April twenty-nine, two thousand thirteen. Authorize the award of a contract to Mid-Atlantic Truck Center, Linden, New Jersey, for the purchase of auto parts for heavy-duty vehicles for various departments for the period March twelve, two thousand thirteen through March seventeen, two thousand fourteen, at a cost not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Authorize the award of a contract to Associated Auto Parts, Linden, New Jersey, for the purchase of auto parts for heavy-duty vehicles for various departments for the period March twelve, two thousand thirteen through March seventeen, two thousand fourteen, at a cost not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Authorize the award of a contract to Air-Buriken Equipment Hillside, New Jersey, for the purchase of auto parts for heavy-duty vehicles for various departments for the period March twelve, two thousand thirteen through March seventeen, two thousand fourteen, at a cost not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars. Authorize the award of a contract to March Randall Recreation Company, Spring Lake, New Jersey, for the purchase of playground equipment for Holland Park at a total cost of eighty-six thousand two hundred sixty-five dollars seventy cents. Authorize the award of a contract to Campbell Freeline or LLC, Edison, New Jersey, for the purchase of auto parts for heavy-duty vehicles for various departments for the period March twelve, two thousand thirteen through March seventeen, two thousand fourteen, at a cost not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars.
You have the reading of the resolution, your pleasure?
Will the resolutions run well, Mr. President?
Move next second, you come next. I would just like to make just a few comments on the playground, the purchase for a Holland playground. As you know, we are, are gonna have a new bracelet going in, uh, and, uh, we want to sell, we're buying, we're gonna be putting it in a new skateboard park, uh, in that area, also with new playground equipment. So, I think it's a win-win situation for that area, for the community, and certainly for our youth. Uh, will they, will we get all the kids off this, off the screen with the skateboard, you know, with it, and we'll help. Uh, so I think it's a win-win situation once we complete that park and hopefully utilize wooden has been. Go on.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gusti.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Grover.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Maza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye, the eyes, point person, please.
Authorize the award of a contract to Delta Products Sterling, New Jersey, for the purchase of auto parts for heavy-duty vehicles for various departments for the period March twelve, two thousand thirteen through March seventeen, two thousand fourteen, at a cost not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Authorize the award of a contract to Route Twenty-Three Auto Mall, Buffalo, New Jersey, for the purchase of auto parts for heavy-duty vehicles for various departments for the period March twelve, two thousand thirteen through March seventeen, two thousand fourteen, at a cost not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Authorize the award of a contract to Arizona Handing and Contracting, Edison, New Jersey, for the painting of public buildings with the Department of Public Works Division, Public Buildings, for a period of two years from the date of the award in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars per year. Authorize the award of a contract to East Coast Emergency Lighting, Millstone Township, New Jersey, for the purchase of emergency lighting and insulation for the police department for the period March fourteen, two thousand thirteen through March fifteen, two thousand fifteen, at a cost not to exceed one hundred fifty thousand dollars. Authorize property officials to accept a subgrant award of the federal fiscal year two thousand twelve of Department of Homeland Security Emergency Management Performance Grant Program funding in the amount of ten thousand dollars to assist in the operation of emergency management. Authorize the award of a contract to Lawson Products, Inc., Yarding, Pennsylvania, for the purchase of auto parts for heavy-duty vehicles for various departments for the period March twelve, two thousand thirteen through March seventeen, two thousand fourteen, at a cost not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars.
You have the reading of the resolution, your pleasure?
Will the resolutions run well, Mr. President?
Move next second, you come next. Go on.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gusti.
Aye.
Councilman Questa.
Aye.
Councilman Grover.
Aye.
Councilman Torres.
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilman Maza.
Aye.
President Gold.
Aye, the resolution, please.
Permit the purchase engagement to advertise private terrorist CEO bids, Elizabeth Fire Department specifications, to purchase universal cold foam. Authorize property officials to waive taxes, interest, and penalties on property located at Ten Cherry Street from January two thousand eight forward and for the third and fourth quarter of tax year two thousand seven. With the provision, the Union County Improvement Authority will be responsible for payment of taxes for the third and fourth quarter of tax year two thousand seven. Authorize property officials to execute all necessary documents for the Petco Foundation capital grant in an amount not to exceed two million dollars to construct a new animal shelter in the city with a no-match requirement. Authorize the expenditure of twenty-four thousand three hundred twenty dollars to the Elizabeth Board of Education, Elizabeth, for security and custodial services for the SOAR after-school program utilizing Nicholas Murray Butler School Number Twenty-Three for the period October fifteen, two thousand twelve through June fourteen, two thousand thirteen. Authorize the award of a contract to Dynamic Group, Ellen Singh, Chester, New Jersey, to continue serving as the licensed site-repeating Asian professional to commence soil cleanup in preparation of a remedial action order at the former New Jersey Transit and Bus Garage, eight-six-five Livingston Street, for the period March twenty-six, two thousand thirteen through March twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen, at a cost not to exceed one million six hundred ninety-five thousand eight hundred fifty dollars unless they're authorized by city council. Authorize the award of a contract to ATAC Concrete, Inc., Edison, New Jersey, for site and construction of a multipurpose recreation, recreational facility at the Charles Holland Memorial Playground and Skate Park at a cost of five hundred ninety-eight thousand three hundred twenty-two dollars. Authorize the award of a contract to James R. Guerra, Elizabeth, to provide professional architectural services in connection with Mary Design for renovations to the Mickey Wolfland Recreation Center at a cost not to exceed seven thousand five hundred dollars plus reimbursables. Permit the Franco-Mazza Civic Association, Elizabeth, to host the St. Vito Process in Peace at the Valdez Club Hall, fourth Avenue, High Street, on June twenty through twenty-third, two thousand thirteen, from six-thirty PM to ten-thirty PM. Grant permission to place a banner of street sign in remembrance of Francis Scott Walker, Jr., in the block of South Carr Street between First and Park Street. Authorize the establishment of a loading zone for severe refrigeration, East Grand Street to be installed on the boardside of East Grand Street, beginning ninety-seventy east of Hope Street and continuing sixty-four feet east or up, Monday through Friday, nine AM to six PM. Rescind a resolution adopted September twenty-six, two thousand, establishing a handicap parking space in front of the premises located at eighty-four-eight Warren Street specifically to make same a personalized handicap parking space. Authorize settlement and workers' compensation litigation matter of concheting versus to the of Elizabeth in the total amount of fifteen thousand dollars paid to individuals through bingo raffle licenses.
You have the reading of the resolution, your pleasure?
Will the resolutions run well, Mr. President?
Move next second, you come next.
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Questa.
Mr. President, regarding the, uh, the SOAR program, uh, that we all know is a venture that's included in Elizabeth and the board of education, sometimes I am not completely satisfied as to, uh, support it. But nevertheless, I'm happy to see that this program continues to be in effect, uh, and it has been there, and I remember it's certainly right for around thirty years now. But speaking of what it, uh, Mr. President, I will take exception to the comments made by Commissioner Mizzoue or earlier, your bogus meeting, when he stated that police officers are here to intimidate. They are not, I for one, and very happy to see that we have police officers, and this means, as you stated, Mr. President, they are here to serve and protect not only Memphis City Council, but the Dolly, but large. So, his hand is totally, totally, uh, erroneous. Also, and he sent a flag, and he tried to lecture us, uh, as to how we forgot the meetings, relying on police speaking. He stated that we should let people speak freely and we do that. You do a lot with our officers, and allowing people to speak, but you are right to them. People need to deal with the same respect that they respect from us. Uh, in the past, the board of education has been notorious for delaying police speaking, and I personally have witnessed that, where you are waiting to speak and then continue to conduct the business of, you know, so people really do not get a chance to speak. So, once again, I take exception to those two comments, and I realize that members of the audience, the public spoke about allegations of something that happened, uh, March first, evidently, we don't know all of that, and even again, you were correctly indicating that there's an investigation going on. They would be pretty much sure that we're responsible for us to make any, any judgments to prejudge that situation at this time. So, for that, which I, I, I don't see it, right? Because I really don't know what to believe and people know for a while. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor. You have one else?
Mr. President. Thank you, Councilor, briefly, and I want to echo the comments of Councilman Questa. Um, I think we run this body as a whole, over the years, runs, runs a great public speaking, allow public to speak rather than giving the meaning, so they can say their piece and go on to their business. Uh, so I agree with Councilman Questa. I also want to congratulate the administration, Director of Health Department for putting together this two-million-dollar, uh, uh, grant with Petco Foundation so we can get a new, uh, shelter. I know that's been a sore subject for us in our town, and I'm hoping that this two-million-dollar grant will allow us to get a new shelter so that, uh, we can take care of the animals when we move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, yes.
Councilman.
And just to echo some of the citizens, uh, Councilman Grover, regarding the grant, the one thing I like about it is that it requires no matching funds. So, if we are awarded the two million, the city doesn't have to put up one dime in terms of matching any of the grant dollars. And I just said, this, it would be excellent and wonderful thing to do for us to have a new animal shelter that, you know, fit the needs of the twenty-first century as it takes to the animals that roam our city. And regarding, um, Commissioner Trujillo, uh, that was simply out of place for him. And regarding Commissioner Trujillo, that was simply out of place for him. We allowed him the liberty to come and speak. If we were to go to the Board of Ed meeting, we would not get that same liberty. So, therein lies the total hypocrisy and rhetoric that came forth of his mouth on his statement. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else? Councilwoman Maza.
Yes, Mr. President, I also do echo the wording of the previous councilman or council lady tonight. Our police department is here tonight to protect everybody, not only the councilman or the city council president or the mayor, but the people in the audience, and of course, we want them to come in all the time to protect and serve, and that's their job. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. President, I also agree with my colleagues on the various points that we made with respect to public speaking. I think it's ironic that we had here several weeks ago, a gradual effort of residents that came here before us, asking us that we could forward a resolution requesting on the Board of Education, put the public speaking at the early part of the agenda, instead of having to wait two or three hours till the end of the night so that they can speak. And Mr. Trujillo comes here today criticizing us about that, and a still, from my understanding, had not taken any action to move that public speaking to the top of the agenda. So, I just wanted to comment on that. I also want to echo the sentiments with regard to the director of Health and Senior Services, her effort to try and reconstruct a new animal shelter here in the city is desperately being prepared, and I know she's doing everything she can to try to find funds, to find ways to get that director. I also would like to mention, it's a small thing, we have this sign for Francis Howard R., like, commending the councilman awards for doing that, and this woman, I just heard her speaking, it was a rally the other day, a miles rally, she was there speaking, and she still feels the pain very much of what happened with her son, and they still have a important person in this, to her son. So, it's just a small gesture, you know, to her, not to give her the pain, but I'm certainly happy to see that being done for her son. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else? Global.
Councilwoman Perkins-Gusti.
Aye.
Councilwoman Questa.
Aye.
Councilwoman Grover.
Aye.
Councilwoman Torres.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Keenan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Maza.
Excuse me, the Franco-Mazza Civic Association, and yes, anything else?
President Gold.
Aye, the eyes, one person, please. Commendation for that woman, fifteen years old, killed, was given, was sick on the bus prior to Roseport, isn't it?
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I have another commendation.
Okay.
For autism, which is April's National Autism Month, I would like to do, excuse me? Yeah, the whole month available, this National Autism Month, and I would like for the city to recognize that issue, which is plaguing New Jersey. New Jersey is one of the worst states in the country as it tends to autism, and we have a lot of children in the City of Elizabeth who are on the spectrum. So, I just want to let residents know that prayerfully we'll be having some programs available in Elizabeth, because currently, a lot of the programs that are in the county, they're in Mountainside or Summit, Fanwood, they're in other places, but they're not provided for here in the City of Elizabeth. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else? Global. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, Alori, the comments, sorry. Alori, a person's name I'm going to mention now is really dedicated, close to my heart, and of course, she'll be in here today, tonight. Ms. Idella Upier, trustee free of the line, served quite well through this city and through his whole state building, and she's going to miss some Charles Fogle, DePaul, Martin, Elizabeth Fire Department. Any other word?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman Questa.
I don't have any more, but I also want to say that this up here has left a lasting impression on many of us who have been working and meant to be with her. She's very kind also. Personally, I have a lot of gratitude for all the time and efforts that she put throughout the years to support my endeavors, so definitely, this person I believe is.
Yes. Anyone else? Councilwoman.
I have down a work with this, I'll be, as a library trustee member, when I was on the library board, and she was a very, very dedicated artist, Chinese woman, she will be grateful, Mr. President.
Mr. President, yes, she was rewarded then as a citizen to me, she was a relative, she was my son's community grandmother, watched him many times for me, my own spiritual advisor, my spiritual covering. Whenever I would call her, which was frequently, she would always have to stop and just pray for you and the children and the boys, and it's, you know, it is, thank you.
Councilwoman Questa.
Yes, Mr. President, I actually, I met Mrs. LePierre when I got elected councilman from the sixth ward, and during my watch meeting that we had at Fanti Ma's basement, I was telling Evanda this evening, when I walked in, when I saw the name on her desk, mentioned that she always was very spiritually, always invoking the Holy Spirit, okay, Mr. Maza, Councilman, let's all die, and pray, that we have a great meeting, and blah, blah, blah. And we always left with the wisdom and the suggestion to always do better for our community, and really, that did an impact to me personally, and I really appreciate what she did, so I'm gonna miss her a lot.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. President, I guess I have to, and it's great to hear all the comments of various councilpeople here talking about her, and she's just a very sweet, gentle, kind woman, you know, she would hand, give her hand out to you and help you in the way she did, she was just a genuine woman, and she spoke from the heart, and that's what I'm gonna really remember most about her, and that was her.
Mr. President, I, there's very few people that have come on this world with the mark, I'm here as one of those few, everything she did was very kind, I've heard a vet work coming at her, and it's folks I've had that the mark went on, and we all obviously, based on all the comments, have been touched by her, and as well, a lot of people in the city, she's been here for many years, and Mark, she will have a big cry as a film. My sincerest apologies, call it a film.
Anyone else? Yeah, Councilwoman Doris?
Mr. President, as numerous members of the city council, I haven't had the ability to meet Miss LePierre, but after listening to my colleagues, the city, she's going to be truly missed in the city. My condolences go out to her in effect.
You have to stand for more.